Rutherford County Board of Commissioners meeting. Like all the audience, if you would please stand, I'd like to call forward our chaplain, Trey Gooch, to lead us in prayer, and also he will lead us immediately after the prayer in pledge of allegiance to the flag and to our allegiance to the state flag. You're recognized, Commissioner.
Thank you. Let's go to our Father in prayer. Oh, Father, we love you and we praise your name, for we know that all good comes from you. And, Father, we're thankful that we can assemble here tonight to take care of the people's business. And as we do that tonight and forward, we would ask that our minds will be directed on the good intentions and what's right for the people of Rutherford County in a transparent way. And, Father, also, may we conduct ourselves in a way that would find your approval. Father, it seems like that every time law enforcement would take fentanyl and other illicit drugs off the streets, that a thousand times more would come through our unsecure southern border. And it just seems like this is a losing battle. But, Father, we know that we can do things with your help, so we want to ask that you give us the strength, that if we know of anyone who may be struggling, that we have the strength to intervene and do everything we can to save that person's life. Father, as the war rages overseas, we're finding more and more that families are being devastated, even humanity. And so, Father, we're going to ask for peace, and we will ask that you would give it to us quickly. Father, we would ask these things through the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
(Inhales) With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, intended for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three white stars on a field blue, God keep them strong and ever true. It is the pride of the blood that we salute the flag of Tennessee.
Thank you, Commissioner Gooch. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight, all of our guests. Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll.
Commissioner David Gammon.
Here.
Commissioner Piercy.
Here.
Commissioner Rather.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Buchanan.
Here.
Commissioner Kush.
Present.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Gurley.
Here.
Commissioner Blair.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Virgil Gammon. Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Key.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Serrano is present. Have a quorum, 20 present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I certainly appreciate that. Before we get started tonight, I saw a couple of friends walk in a few minutes ago. I'd like to recognize Mr. Hoot Gibson and Dr. Ray Sutton, two of our famous astronauts that have brought a lot of recognition to Rutherford County. We certainly appreciate you all being here tonight. You're quite welcome. All right, next is item E. Members, as reading and approval of the minutes. Chairman Pro Tem Jeff Phillips, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor Catherine. I've reviewed our March 17 meeting minutes. I find them to be in order, and move that we dispense with the reading and they be adopted as presented.
Have a motion for adoption. As read, have a second. Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Cook. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, we have resolution of appreciation for Sergeant Thaddeus. Help me with the name. O'Clary? Is that correct? O'Clary? Okay. Who's reading that resolution? Commissioner Phillips, do you have the resolution? If you would, please come forward, please, and read this resolution. Is the sergeant here tonight?
Superintendent Cope, you're out there. Resolution of recognition for Sergeant Thaddeus O'Clary. Whereas Superintendent Bill Cope, Captain Smitty, and staff of Rutherford County Correctional Works Center nominated Sergeant Thaddeus O'Clary for the Tennessee Correction Institute Facilities Training Officer of the Year Award, and whereas Sergeant Thaddeus O'Clary was named the 2022 Tennessee Correction Institute Facilities Training Officer of the Year, and whereas Sergeant O'Clary has 19 years of extensive training experience with the private sector and corrections training. His private sector training brought a new perspective to corrections training and helped in creating an even higher quality of training to the highly accredited Rutherford County Correctional Works Center facility, and whereas Sergeant O'Clary has been with the Rutherford County Correctional Works Center for nine years. During that time, he has served as field training officer, shift corporal, shift sergeant, and current training, facility training sergeant. And now, therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that its regular session on this 14th day of April 2022 does hereby recognize and congratulate Sergeant Thaddeus O'Clary for his many achievements and his dedicated service to the citizens of Rutherford County. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of recognition be forwarded to Sergeant Thaddeus O'Clary by the clerk of this legislative body, resolved this 14th day of April 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second for several others. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Just real quickly, when I moved here from Hawaii nine years ago, it was a very different experience for us, a different environment. But working at the work center, meeting the people that I've met, being in this particular field of employment and also in this community, we're very, very thankful. My wife and I, my daughter and I, we're very thankful to be part of it. It's very different. It's (laugh), the food is a little different, but we absolutely appreciate it. I thank my superintendent, my captain, my lieutenants, my sergeants. I couldn't have done it without them, and I thank them for giving me the opportunity to strive and be good.[570.16][570.16](Laughter).
Director Cope? Thaddeus O'Clary is not Irish.[578.79][578.79](Laughter). But he is the best training coordinator in the state. Congratulations to that. Next, members, we have item G, public comments. First, we have Susan Allen. She is here to speak on the landfill. Ms. Allen, if you'd make your way forward, and if you would, please keep your comments Welcome, Ms. Allen.
Hi. My name is Susan Allen. I live at 2031 Nelson Lane in Murfreesboro. As president of the nonpartisan Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance, celebrating our 20th year endorsing ethical and voter-responsive government, I'm glad to be back. For the last three years, we have been educating ourselves about solid waste solutions for the county, from attending or viewing public works and solid waste subcommittee meetings, attending Central Tennessee Solid Waste Planning Board meetings, studying relevant TCA codes, talking one-on-one with several commissioners, Mayor McFarland, and several attorneys working on the landfill problem. Never did we, or the other organizations we have united with, ever think we would learn so much about solid waste and what to do with it. But here we are. My main reason for being here tonight is to hopefully connect with people who are in the audience, or who take the time to watch this meeting on TV, or the Government County YouTube channel. There are thousands here who have been negatively affected by the landfill, but there are also many who have no clue about the smell and other problems associated with it. If I'm remembering correctly, at least three years ago, Mayor Catherine said public meetings would be planned to help citizens understand the gravity of the limited life of the landfill and what that would mean to county taxpayers. That public educational component has never happened, and there are tens of thousands of Rutherford Countyans who are completely in the dark about this issue. TDEC and Republic seem to have a chummy relationship to the detriment of the Rutherford County citizens who live around the Middle Point landfill, in spite of TDEC's mission of protecting the quality of life for Tennessee citizens. When a major industry and a State Department are not responsive to the citizens, citizens have to fight back. That's why we encourage as many as possible to speak at the Solid Waste Planning Board Public Hearing on April 25 in McMinnville, to support stopping trash coming into the county from outside our region. The resolution being considered can be found as a link on the second news article at rutherfordcountytn.gov, and also in Scott Broden's excellent article in today's D N J. The Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance fully supports any action that prevents the new landfill that Republic wants and making the existing landfill for local solid use only. Forget the tired lament that nothing will change. Citizen action goes a long way to influence a decision. We hope to see a full house at the Warren County Administrative Building in McMinnville at 6:00 PM on Monday, April 25. And I hope you all have a wonderful Easter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Next, we have Commissioner Joe Gurley. Commissioner Gurley's going to speak on the salary schedule.
Good evening. My name is Joe Gurley. I live at 3542 Morton Lane in Smyrna, Tennessee. As part of my duties as a commissioner is to review committee meetings, make myself knowledgeable of what's going on, so that I can intelligently vote when I get here. In reviewing the presentation of Mr. Thompson before the Budget and Finance Committee last Thursday evening, a ways into that, there is a statement made that I take exception to. While there was a lot of good, methodical information presented in that presentation, that should not be discarded because of this comment. This comment, I found flippant, ignorant, and insulting. Someone who spent 27 years in public safety, carrying a state badge and a county badge, as well as 15 years as an engineer in corporate America, I know the difference between public safety and corporate America. He referred to a one-year certified deputy as worthless. No one is worthless. Everyone has worth. But back to that particular statement, by the time a deputy or police officer has gotten to the year mark, they should have been to the law enforcement training academy. They should have had their field training. So seven or eight months into that, into their employment, they should be fully qualified. No one asked, when you have an incident like happened in New York City the other day, no one asked, "How long have you been employed?" No, you're not good enough. You run the other way. Thus, those of us who have been there more than a year will run toward the explosion. No one asked the firefighter, "How many years have you been on the job?" before they enter a burning building. It's a statement that should have never been made, and like I said, we should not throw out the baby with the bathwater, the whole thing, but because there was a lot of good information that we'll be probably talking about later tonight. But this statement deserves an apology to all of (bell dings). Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next, we have Commissioner Virgil Gammon. Speak on the salary schedule.
All right, I'm going to apologize. I'm a little out of breath. I hadn't taken stairs in about four years with trifocals. Let me follow up with Commissioner, so just said, and when I read this, the more I read it, the more my blood boiled. I've seen these guys kick doors, the guys and the women, kick doors for $38,000, $40,000 a year, put their life on the line with kids at home. And some of these are one-year veterans. It takes about three years to get somebody trained to be a strong veteran that can train other people. I've been in law enforcement 41 years, 38 sheriff's offices, I've worked in every branch, and I've never heard a most moronic, stupid, ignorant statement by somebody who's supposed to be a professional in my life, being at the sheriff's office 38 years. And it boils my blood. It makes me mad. I take it personal. We all bleed blue. I don't, I haven't done what a paramedic at a firm has done, but they're all professionals. I can't tell you how they do their job, but I know how my brother officers do. And how dare anyone say, "I don't believe a chief or sheriff ever made such a statement as that." And I personally will call it personal air. And I hope he comes and sees me, because it's wrong to say this. This is almost as silly as saying, "Hey, Rutherford County deputies, other people, you're never going to make what the city of Mercerboro makes." It's wrong. We ought to be paying them more. Paying them more. And that's one thing I fight for. It has nothing to do with what my future's going to be. It's just, I ask the commission to please be open-minded. I know you are. I know your hearts. I've worked with you. I've worked with you for many years, but the last four years, I've seen who you are. I've seen what you want to do. Sometimes we don't agree, but at the end of the day, we're still going to have a cup of coffee, and we're still going to respect each other. But I absolutely do not respect the attitude of this so-called pay plan thought process. We're not hitting the core of what the issue is, and it's putting worth on numbers. You know, the study, I know that this person, I've checked on him, he's done studies for the city of Mercerboro and other people. And I'm sure he's a fine family man, not saying it, but somebody needs to choose the words wisely before they address, whether it's 500 employees at the sheriff's office for one, there's a lot more in this entire county, and you called public safety people worthless, worthless. It's just, it's just a wrong thing to do, and I'm questioning the professional ideology of what this person brings to the table.[1223.13][1223.13](Bell dings).
Thank you, Commissioner. Now, I'd like to call on item H and on your agenda members, elections confirmation. Commissioner Reed, if you would, please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item one, election of notaries. Ladies and gentlemen, there's a listing of your notaries, and you may find those on your iPad. Mr. Chairman, I move to confirm the election of these individuals as Rutherford County notaries.
Have a motion, have a second, from Commissioner Piercy. Any questions? Without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item two, steering would like to confirm Carl Hudgens to the Emergency Communications District Board, E911, term to expire May 2026. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion, have a second. Commissioner P. and others. Any questions? Without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item three, steering wishes to confirm Savon Cole as judicial commissioner. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Sir.
Have a second. Toronto and others. Any questions? Without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this is all the business of elections and confirmations.
All right, thank you so much, Chairman. Resolution on, to approve the consent agenda on item I. Chairman Pro Tem, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor Catherine. I've reviewed the consent agenda. It's a lengthy one, but I find all the items that are on the consent agenda appropriate to be there, and without objection, I move that the consent agenda be adopted as presented.
Have a motion, is there a second on the consent? Commissioner Johnson in back. Members, any objection? We'll be on the board if you will. Members, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Madam Clerk, record the vote.
21 yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. We have item J, unfinished business. We have no unfinished business at this time. It's not quite 6:30. We still have a few moments before our public hearing. And it's tough getting into the salary benefits under L. We could, why don't we do this? Why don't we go into, oh, we can't do that. Let's just go into first items on reports by standing committee. Is that okay? Yeah, we'll get, we'll get a couple of budget items out of the way. Sorry to cut you off guard, Chairman P., but we can move forward on a couple of these, and then we'll come back at 6:30 for our public hearing. Without objection, you're recognized.
Thank you. One of my fellow commissioners over there jokingly said, "I could talk for six minutes. Go ahead."[1474.41][1474.41](Laughter). Usually I'd be flipped to the right page here. Okay, the first item, item M1A, is a resolution asking for some money for the ambulance service. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the ambulance service fund be amended as follows. Emergency medical services, a decrease to assigned fund balance of $70,000, and an increased expenditures for other contracted services for $70,000. This is for funding the new billing service that they have contracted with. Resolve this 14th day of April 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion, is there a second? Second, Commissioner Piercy. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, we're on the board. Members, if you would, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
21 yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Next item, M1B. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the special purpose fund be amended as follows. From the Sheriff's Department, increased expenditures for confidential, $20,000, a decrease in restricted fund balance of $20,000. Resolve this 14th day of April 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Rather. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, without objection, we're on the board. Members, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
21 yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Item M1C. Whereas there is a need to plan, design, construct, and renovate schools due to growth in the area, and whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education has anticipated the future needs of the school system, and whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education desires to proceed with the funding of the design of the following projects at an estimated cost as approved by the various county committees. Riverdale High School addition, $1,100,000. Smyrna High School addition, $1,100,000. Oakland High School addition, $1,200,000. Laverne High School addition, $1,100,000. Blackman High School addition, $1,200,000, for a total of $5,700,000. Whereas funds in the amount of $2,301,470 are available through the transfer from other projects, and the funds in the amount of $3,398,530 will be funded from a future bond issue. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the funding for the design of the aforementioned projects is an estimated amount of $5,700,000. Be authorized with funds of $2,301,470 coming from, transfer from other projects, and funds in the amount of $3,398,530 coming from a future bond issue. Resolve this 14th day of April 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner McAdoo and others. Any questions or discussion? Without objection, seeing none, we're on the board.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
19 yes, one abstain.
Motion passes. Let's go ahead and continue. I don't think this will take very long at all on item D, and that will take care of your business before the committee tonight.
Thank you. Item M1D, and this is actually something we do every year to claim, unclaim. Item M1D, and this is actually something we do every year to claim unclaimed revenue. Whereas Tennessee Code Annotated, it may take us a lot longer. Tennessee Code Annotated 6 and 6629-146C provides that a municipality or county in Tennessee may request payment for the unclaimed balance of funds reported and remitted on behalf of the local government and its agencies if it exceeds $100, less a proportionate share of the cost of administering the program. And whereas Rutherford County, Tennessee, and/or its agencies have remitted unclaimed accounts to the state treasurer in accordance with the Uniform Unclaimed Property Act, and whereas Rutherford County, Tennessee, agrees to meet all of the requirements of Tennessee Code Annotated Section 66-29-101, et cetera, to accept liability for future claims against accounts presented and funds paid to it. And whereas it is agreed that this local government will retain a sufficient amount to ensure prompt payment of allowed claims, that the balance of funds will be deposited in this local government's general fund. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, request the state treasurer to pay the unclaimed balance of the funds in accordance with the provisions of Tennessee Code Annotated Section 66-29-146C. A list of remittances made by or on behalf of the local government and its agencies is attached. I hereby certify that this is a true and exact copy of the foregoing resolution which was approved and adopted at a meeting held on the 14th day of April 2022. Originally, it is on file in this office. I further certify that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners consists of 21 members, and that the members voted in favor of the resolution. That will be added at the end if we do pass that. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion, is there a second? You want to read that again?
No, thank you.
Have a second, Commissioner Gerling, Commissioner Serena. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, members, we're on the board. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman P. Next, we'll come back into our regular program back on the calendar, which is item K. It's time for our public hearings. We're just a few minutes past that. So call on Director Demasi, if you will, please come forward, and we'll start with the first zoning request. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well tonight. We have two rezoning requests for your consideration tonight. The first is by Ms. Amy Dearman. This is located along Sharp Springs Road. The current property zoning is residential medium density, or RM, and she's asking for commercial services zoning. Size of the property is about 29 acres, but only about an acre of that is being asked for rezoning. The applicant currently operates a sign and lighting business at 184 Sharp Springs Road, which is immediately adjacent to the subject property. You may recall this application from about two years ago. A rezoning application came before you at that time due to a zoning enforcement action. The business was being run on the property, and there was also a large amount of open storage on that adjacent property, which is the one we're talking about tonight. That open storage has since been cleaned up, so it's in compliance, and the property was rezoned again, so her business is also in compliance. She's asking now to zone approximately one acre of the subject property we're talking about tonight to construct a building to house her trucks and sign materials. There would not be any open storage, and we feel that this qualifies as construction, sales, and services, which would also be allowed in the CS zone, similar to what the 184 Sharp Springs Road property is zoned. Concept plan has been included with your agenda materials. Should this application be approved, she will be required to submit an engineered site plan to our office for review as far as access and parking, landscaping, and also our performance standards. There was not much of any discussion at the planning commission or the public on this item. Following the public hearing, the planning commission did recommend approval by a unanimous vote, so I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Demasi? No questions. Then I'll call the Rutherford County Commission meeting into recess and hold a public hearing on this request. The public hearing is now in session. Anyone desiring to speak for or against this issue? If you would, please come forward. State your name, your address, and if you are for or against the proposed request. Seeing no one come forward, I declare the public hearing closed, and Rutherford County Board of Commissioners back into session. Is there a motion? Is there a motion? Commissioner Phillips. Oh, Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we approve this request with staff comments.
Have a motion by Commissioner Stevens to approve the request with staff comments, with the recommendation. Second, Commissioner P. on the second. Any further discussion? We're on the board, members. If you would, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Demasi?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Our second and final rezoning application before you tonight is by Ms. Melinda Brown Black, located along Last Cassis Pike. Again, the property is currently zoned RM, residential medium density, and she's also asking for commercial services. Total size of the several properties, there's three or four involved here, is about 2.4 acres in size, excuse me, three parcels. The applicant is proposing to zone all the parcels to commercial services. According to information provided by the applicant's representative, there are no current development plans. After having some further discussions with the applicant and the applicant's representative, they're looking maybe to do a future strip center, something like that, on the property. But again, at this point, nothing concrete is being planned. Parcel 4.0 has access to Last Cassis Pike and Delay Drive. The other parcels only have access to Last Cassis Pike. Of course, should this application be approved, then any development plan would have to come before the planning commission in regards to the access and the parking, landscaping, and the performance standards, similar to what we discussed just a moment ago. After staff's presentation, again, similar with the last discussion that we had on the last application, there was very little discussion from the planning commission or the public on this item. There were some questions about the property being within the 100-year floodplain and the county's requirements for any development that might occur. After that discussion and the public hearing, the planning commission did recommend approval, again, by a unanimous vote. So, once again, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Demasi? Any questions? Seeing none, then I call the Rutherford County Commission meeting into recess to hold a public hearing on this request. Public hearing is now in session. Is there anyone desiring to speak for or against this issue? If you would, please come forward, state your name, your address, and if you're for or against the proposed request. Seeing no one coming forward, I declare the public hearing closed. Rutherford County Board of Commissioners back into session. I need a motion. Commissioner Piercy.
I was in attendance at the planning, and no one come and spoke against the subject. No one has come here tonight. What she's wanting to do lies almost in front of one of our new public safety buildings we're going to build out there, and I see nothing wrong with it for what she's wanting to do. With that said, I'll make the motion for its approval with staff comments.
I have a motion from Commissioner Piercy with staff comments about that recommendation. And second, on Commissioner Kush. Any further comments, discussion? Seeing none, we're on the board, members. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty yes.
Twenty yes. Motion passes. Yes, sir, you sure can. You're recognized, Mr. Demasi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I just want to give you just a brief update. We had a very good kickoff event for our Plan Rutherford, Comprehensive Plan update. Just wanted to let you know, we are going to be having a series of community meetings in the month of May, starting on May 16th, and basically Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, going that week in different quadrants of the county. I will provide those dates to you. We just finalized them, but I just wanted to let you know. But we have, basically, we're going to have one in the town of Smyrna, at the Smyrna Event Center. We'll have one at Last Cassis Elementary, one at Rockvale High School, and then one at Plainview Elementary. The times will be 5:30 to 7:00 for all of them, but we'll be posting those dates and getting that information to you just during that week, so just wanted to let you know about that.
Thank you, Mr. Director. Takes us to item L on the agenda, salary and benefit schedule. Ms. Stevenson, are you ready? You're recognized.
So thank you for everyone coming out this evening, and as promised, we brought forth the salary survey and the Bennett survey that was requested a couple of months back. This body asked that we reach out and find someone who could complete a survey for us. Forrest Thompson and Associates have been in this field and this industry for many years. We have participated in surveys that they do for other entities, and then they have also done surveys for the county in the past. Steve Thompson is the gentleman who has completed the survey for us, and I'm going to turn the floor over to him now, and I will ask, answer any questions as they come up.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to plead humbly guilty as charged regarding that inappropriate comment at the last meeting. I was probably inappropriately referring to some very informal discussions I've had over the years with police chiefs and sheriffs from Bartlett, Tennessee, all the way to Gatlinburg and places in between. And I think most it's a reflection of their frustration with staffing levels not being sufficient in many jurisdictions for a variety of reasons. And so I'm talking about pay rates and staffing, some kind of offhand, not sincere, more in the spirit of the moment kind of comments, and that's all I was referring to. My son is a detective with the Franklin Police Department. I'm a very strong supporter of law enforcement across the state, and I try to champion their cause whenever I can from the salary and benefit side because I know law enforcement, it's a tough job. It's a tough job to recruit for, especially more recently. So I, again, I offer my sincere apologies. I was not meant to denigrate the work that any law enforcement person does. It just was an inappropriate, unfortunate choice of words, and again, I'm very sorry I did that. So please accept my apologies. Moving on to the pay study, we were asked to market, compare all of your county jobs to the marketplace to try to help Sonia and HR and you all determine how to adjust salaries going forward. And if you look at the handout here, I'll just hit the highlights and then open it up for any questions you might have. I don't want to get into lots of details, but obviously, our objective is to make sure that your wage and salary practices are competitive with the marketplace so you can attract and retain qualified people for all positions. And we wanted to help Sonia and HR and the county determine how to adjust their pay scales and how to set pay increase budgets for the coming fiscal year. So in comparing the positions to the market, we looked at two comparisons. One is to other public sector employers, and you'll see on the first page of the handout the list of other counties and city governments that we compared Rutherford County positions to. That's our public sector comparison. You'll note that some of these on here have recently announced. Some have actually implemented increases in the last couple of months, some were prior earlier in the year. We've tried to incorporate that data where we can, that we have it available to us. We've even tried to incorporate that updated data in the analysis. But in addition to that, to compensate for other things that we know are going on out there in terms of proposals, we're doing about 13 pay studies across the state right now, so we have a pretty good feel for what's going on. We, as I mentioned on here, we project all the data forward to July 1, 2022. So as part of that projection process, we came up with a factor that we think incorporates, acknowledges, accounts for what's going on in the marketplace in middle Tennessee especially. So that's the public sector data. We also have a general business and industry database. There's 4,000 job titles in there. We can match pretty much every county position to one or two jobs in that database. The only exception are certified law enforcement and certified firefighting positions. Those positions just not in that database, so for those, we are relying solely on the public sector comparisons. Again, all data were projected forward to July 1, 2022. So for each job, we basically determined a market rate for the position, which is comprised of the average of the public sector number and the private sector number for each job. Those numbers were averaged together to come up with a market rate for the job. It should be noted that this market rate typically represents an incumbent with five to seven years of experience in the job, so most employers will hire people below the market rate because when they come in, they're not as productive as somebody who's been in the job five or seven years. So most employers will hire new folks, new employees, at a rate below the market rate, and most will allow pay to progress beyond the market rate to reward service, performance, what have you. So in terms of what we found, we calculated this structure index for each position, which is the current pay step number seven in the Rutherford County Pay Plan. You have 21 steps. We chose number seven as a good benchmark to compare it to. The thought process behind that is that somebody starting at the minimum step one with minimal qualifications should be at market rate for the job, again, within that five to seven-year timeframe, and if they're not, you're probably going to find yourselves at risk for losing that person. So we chose step seven as kind of the benchmark we would compare the market data to and calculated a structure index, if you will, by taking your step seven for each job and dividing it by the market rate for that position. So those market indexes are in the table that starts on page two, the far right-hand column, market index at step seven. You can see how they came out here. Overall, you're about 13, 15% below market. If you look at the very last, page number eight in the handout, it fits numbered the same, but it's the last, third from the last there, where the end of the table shows the average index was 88%. The median index was 55, so half are above 85, and half are below 85. The 25th percentile, 75% of the rates were above that in the marketplace, and 75th percentile, for your folks, 5% were above that market number. So it's safe to say, I think, that your pay scales, the pay steps, are about 15% below market, if step seven is supposed to be the market, and I think that's a sound rationale for saying that should be the case. Any, should I turn over to you first, or? All right. So that's the first step of the process, is defining the guidelines, if you will, for administering pay. Then the next question is, what do we do with those guidelines, and how do we adjust pay based on where those guidelines would be positioned? I'll turn it over to Sonia.
Thank you, Steve. So as Steve mentioned, overall, the pay structure is 15% below the market average. The median market on pages two through eight gives the hourly rate that that position in the market, based on this comparison, should be compared to. There are various ways that we can get to this 15% difference, and that will be something that this body will have to provide HR with direction on how you want that implemented, and then also Lisa and I will work towards that. One of the things that came up in the meeting, the Budget Committee meeting, were several factors that I wanted to touch on tonight, just to give some additional information. In your package, you also, on the table, you also have a chart that says county tenure distribution. That's one of the ones with the graphs. And what this tells us is, based on our current full-time population, where the majority of our employee population are within the structure. the majority of our employee population are within the structure. So currently, we have employees from zero years of service up to 39 years of service. And as you see in that first column, zero to three years of service, the majority of our employees are in that column. 439 of our full-time employees have less than three years of service, or three and up to less. The next group is the second largest group, which is three to six years of service at 192. So based on the salary survey and the recommendation, is one of the things that we need to do, and in conversations with our constitutional officers and our directors, is we need to increase our starting pay to try to help us to recruit. The entry level pay has to be higher. But then also to maintain, we need for those first five or six years to be, as Steve mentioned, to get to the median at a higher rate. The purpose of that is because what our industry, not industry, what our history shows us at the county, and I've watched this for several years, if an employee stays with us between seven and nine years, you know, they're pretty much going to stay with us. And we want to continue to maintain those employees, but we also want to make sure that they're not encouraged to leave, you know, for a little bit more extra money. So we want to make sure that our starting pay in those first five to six years are at or above market average, actually, probably above market average. The next page that we provided you was the current pay step distribution. It also is of our graph. And what this tells you, one of the things that, not long after I'd been in this position, I came before this body and asked that we allow experience credit for individuals who worked in a position and was coming at the county so that they wouldn't have to start at a step one. And if you look at this chart, it tells us that four to five, step four to five, 176 employees are in that band. Well, we know by the prior graph that the majority of our employees are, have three or less years of service. What this tells me is 176 of those individuals are, came with experience. So that means that they already have some of the training that they need in order to be successful in their jobs. And so we want to make sure that we're taking care of them. That's where that five to seven years that we need to make sure that we're taking care of them. So this pay distribution helps to see that that is, in fact, one of the things that's happening. So we are being able to recruit some individuals with some experience, but we also need to do things to make sure that they are encouraged to stay with us. Another item that was brought up, when we looked at, when you look at the grid, you'll see in the column that says market index step seven, what that tells you is for each position, where on the survey they fell. Are they below the market, at the market? And for the positions that were at 100% or better, I wanted to go back and look to see what the turnover rates were for those positions. Because sometimes, even though the market says that, that's not what's going to help us to recruit and retain. One of the positions was the animal control officer. It showed that an animal control officer was, wait a minute, let me get to it. I don't want to misstate it. That's my turnover. Wait a minute. The animal control officer supervisor was at 108%. But when we look at animal control as a whole, we've lost 71 employees in that division in the last few years, in the last 10 years. And so in the last 10 years, we've had turnover in that, which tells us that the pay is not enough to encourage some, it may encourage somebody to apply and stay for a while, but they're not staying with us, and then we're having turnover. And the cost of turnover is, you know, can be pretty expensive to us. One of the other positions on here is the veterinarian. We tried for several years to get a veterinarian, and we have a chief veterinarian at this point, but we've not been able to hire the second veterinarian. Even though the survey says that we're offering at 106% of what the margin is, we still cannot hire a veterinarian. When you look at heavy equipment operator, it says we're at 110%. And I would tell you that Mr. Wagner at the Solid Waste and his predecessor, Mr. Nolan, would tell you that we cannot hire our heavy equipment operators, even though the pay is at 110% of the average. So what my statement is with that is that if you see these positions are at 100% or more, that doesn't necessarily mean that they're being paid too much. Because if we're still having recruiting issues and turnover issues within those positions, then that would lead us to believe that that's not going to work for what we're trying to accomplish here at the county. I think that's all. If there are any questions, based on the salary survey, before we get to the benefit survey?
Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you. This data is supposed to be as current as this summer, correct? Maybe up to date through July. Is that correct?
Yes. I'll be quick to acknowledge it's a moving target. We're working with 13 jurisdictions across the state, doing actually more comprehensive classification compensation studies. And everybody's trying to figure out how to respond to inflation in middle Tennessee, especially recruiting difficulties that Sonya just alluded to. And so they're all trying to figure out how to respond to this. And so some of that isn't really in the data yet, but we're trying to project, we're kind of guessing where we're going to end up July 1st.
So guessing, well, what we've seen is a rapid change over the last six months or so. And I'm just wondering if the county were to make adjustments that are in the neighborhood of 15%, when we do that, are we going to be behind again? Are we looking beyond what may happen the rest of this year and maybe next year? Are we making any type of predictions along those lines?
So I think 15% is probably the highest percentage that I've seen in working with the various jurisdictions. But as you can see, you're coming from a generally below-market position. So it's not the same as somebody whose pay structure, pay scales, if you will, are already at market, and they're adding 7%. That's one thing. But if you're 15% below in terms of where your structure is, adding 15%, those are different things, and you can't really compare. So, but to answer your question, it's hard to tell. My guess is this 15% would position you pretty well relative to everybody else, even though you are coming from a below-market position. And, you know, depending on who you read, in the newspapers, the journals, online, whatever, some are saying we could be in a recession by third quarter. So it's just hard to tell. I think in terms of what we know now, what's going on around us, this seems to make a lot of sense to me that we look at the 15%.
Does it make any sense to update this toward the end of this year, to see where we are and how we're comparing? Would it make any sense to do that?
Well, it puts you at risk. It puts you at risk. As I mentioned, some studies, I think, I think Smyrna's already implemented their 7%. So some are doing things right now. I know I'm working with a couple others that they're trying to find some ways to get through the public hearing process so they can get things implemented in May. So they're trying to speed things up, in essence. So I hate to suggest you could wait and not put yourselves at risk in terms of recruiting your attention. That might be a little bit of a risky strategy.
So one of the things to consider that, when we talked about, of course, we know that 15%, the 85%, that's what our overall average is for all of our positions. So we know at the 15%, that gets us to the market. So that's one of the things, I guess, in an easy way to answer your question, is that puts us at the market. So of the individuals that were asked to participate in the survey, based on the list that was provided, they're giving us their salary information based on 2021. And for those entities that we polled, any of those who had already given an increase, some of those that we knew had already given an increase, I provided Mr. Thompson with a list of those entities so he could reach back out and to update this, to make sure that this was as accurate as we could get at this point in time. One of the other things that we mentioned, because of the timing, in order to restructure, there were several things that were requested in this, a restructure to the pay plan and those other type things. Because of the timing to get all that restructure, it's almost too late in the game to do some of those things. That's where it comes in, that we want to make sure that we're doing what is right for those employees. One of the suggestions that was made is that after all of these, after everybody completes their budget process and has their new pay structure in place, that sometime later in the year, we would go back and look and pull that information to see where it was at. And then we would kind of know what, if the recession was going to hit, or those other type things, if we needed to make additional adjustments. However, that would be outside of the budget cycle. So that's why, that's where the 15% was coming in as an overall, if that makes sense.
Mr. Gurley.
Yes. If you remember, I brought this up this time last year. So we've, in my mind, we've lost a year. As I stated in my public comments, I've worked both in corporate America and in the public sector. We're fixing to talk about benefits. When I went to work for the state in 1975, one of the reasons I went to work for the state was the excellent benefits. And that included paying my pension. The state contributed 5% to my pensions, totally. I didn't pay any of it. Well, I did, we paid, and the, but the benefits were great. When I left 21 years later to go in the private sector, I found my benefits in the private sector were actually better than what I was getting 21 years later with the state. Another thing, you know, with the schools, we do incentives. Those science, math, ESL, those hard-to-hire teachers, we allow the school system to, the school system pays an incentive, a hiring incentive, to get those people there. We allow credit for, they get credit for education. You get a master's degree, you get your pay up. You get a PhD, you get your pay up. I've known several people, you know, within the public safety sector, we don't do any of that. And I don't know that we do any of that in general throughout our whole employment category. So that's something I think we need to look at. Aside from this, we need to look at incentives. We need to look at paying for expertise. And you mentioned something that I've, it's been a pet thing with me, because like I said, I've been both places. Said you can't find a comparison for law enforcement and fire, and I would assume basically, well, maybe a little bit for EMS, since EMS is privately, partly private and partly public, but it kind of goes along the same way where it is public. That's because they do a unique job. They do a unique job. You know, when I left THP and went to work for Sprint, I didn't have to worry about being shot. I didn't have to worry about having a wreck or this or that. And if I needed to visit a cell site that was in a kind of dangerous part of Nashville, we got an armed security guard to go with us, you know, to be our protection, individual protection. So it's not the same. And I think that's something we need to further look at as a second step beyond getting us competitive in the marketplace, or we're going to be, we're going to be in bad shape. Give us a couple of more years down the road, who knows? You know, yes, if we have a recession, people tend to come to government jobs a little bit more. They see those as steady. But I don't think that'll be the case this time. So there's a lot here to consider. I'm looking to hear what you have to say about benefits. Thank you.
Thank you.
So members, Commissioner Gammon, and then we're going to cut off discussion if you want to continue. But this was, it wasn't planned, because many of you weren't at the budget meeting last night. And I felt it was necessary that we bring Mr. Thompson back and Sonya so you can have this, think about it. We'll be going into budget, Lisa, soon, and start meeting, your budget members will start meeting several times a week as we head in. The state funding board hasn't met. We don't know what we're getting back from the BEP formula. That hasn't been settled because the legislature hasn't signed it yet. So this is all going to be discussion, but I think this has brought us to the point, after we've done this survey, it showed that we're 15% below market. And with the 15% recommendation, it brings us up to being at 50 percentile in the marketplace, to where we're competitive. When we saw Smyrna, or Murfreesboro went with 7%, with a possible four. Smyrna went with 8% with a possible three, and that put them at 11. I saw Montgomery County go to 20% increase in pay. Hendersonville was going, not in percentages, but from step increases. So everybody's juggling, trying to figure out where they are, how they compete in the marketplace, what we want to do by this. And over the course of the next 45 days, we want to make sure that we retain and we can recruit to be the best county. So a few comments. Commissioner Gammon.
Is it, okay. I just want to say, I appreciate the work on the study. It's just, you know, the circumstances. But what I'm going to say is, one of the things, I've been involved in a number of these. I'm no expert by no means, but I've been involved in analyses, you know, when it comes to salaries. And the thing you have to look at, like Commissioner Gurley said, what I see is, we sit down, if you're hiring somebody, or even when you're promoting somebody, let's say to a sergeant, one of the questions you get asked many times, so where do you see yourself in five years? And if these guys and girls are smart, just say, well, I don't know, what am I going to make in five years? You know, because you can't tell them. That's one of the issues. And I'm not kicking the cat here, but that's one of the issues. And when you look at this study, what I see in it, and I know this has, I don't believe anything to do with the future public safety pay plan, if I'm correct. Is that correct? Trying to sit down with fire paramedics, it's just a salary.
This is just a salary.
Okay.
It's a tool.
That comes later. But here's what I'm going to say about comparisons of other jurisdictions. Did, which you state the pay difference is, did it have to do with, as Commissioner Gurley said, I know that Murfreesboro, for example, gets holiday pay. I know that some places get differential pay. Murfreesboro and other jurisdictions get $100 a year, including the state, you know, toward their pay. And that helps the longevity people that are topped out in many ways, you know, on top of that. So it's not there. You can't talk about health benefits and all that, which is great, because that's how we try to recruit people. But when I got a job here, when I came out of the military, I made more money in the military than it was when I started here at Sheriff's Office. But to be honest with you, you could have gave me a box of popcorn and a Coke, and I'd been tickled at that time. So, but this ain't that day anymore. These people, and I won't say I was dumb or anything, these people are smarter. You've got to recruit them. You got to say, hey, here's what we're going to give you. You can send people all to the state right now, that things are happening, and I appreciate that. But what are you going to recruit them with? You going to go up here to Fort Campbell and other place, say, hey, come on down here. Now, I can't tell you what you're going to make in five years, but come on, come on. And Commissioner Phillips hit it on the head. Where are we going to be again? Because y'all know that I've been with this, been through this many times. The best pay plan we ever had was in 1995. An actual true study where they came in and sat down with you and said, what is your job? What do you do? That's what they based the payoff for back then. There was 42 classifications. And Sonya, what is it now? And I appreciate the work you do. How many classifications is it now?
X58.
Okay, but that's everybody. We had 42 classifications, Sheriff's Office alone, with dispatchers, this, that. I mean, it went all over the place. A sergeant was not a sergeant. And you had a sergeant on patrol, because I remember the year, and I'm shut up here in a second. But it, I remember when this happened, I've said it before, is they started saying, okay, a sergeant is sergeant. Now, I appreciate what a cook does and a cafeteria and everything. But you had a supervisor that was considered a sergeant. Then you have sergeant in the street, and all of a sudden, they said, oh, well, a sergeant's a sergeant. They got a $6,000 raise, and our sergeant's got $1,500. There you go.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Allen.
I just have one quick question. I didn't pick up on this, but an employee who was following this did. One of the cities that was supposed to be included in the study was Hendersonville, and and was there a reason they weren't included?
I'll go back and look, to look at this, do you have your spread?
I don't have it.
It may have just been left off the typographical. I don't have the entire list. You'll have to look to see who he analyzed, but it was provided to him, but I'm not sure.
The reason they're concerned is because they got a 10% raise last year, and it could impact these numbers.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Gammon. We don't consider, just so you know, a sergeant isn't a sergeant. We do have certified, and we have non-certified, and they are treated differently. But this, what this, what is done with this is a guide for you to make your decisions. This isn't for me to make the decision, and then you tell me. This is so that you can have a guide to say, this is what we'd like for you to do and for us to implement. Because my responsibility is whatever you decide is what HR will implement. The one thing that is important is, whatever you decide, it will take Lisa and I some time to calculate what that would be for each of these employees. And so, like, I don't want to say sooner better than later, but I mean, you know, I don't know exactly what the last point is, but we would need to know how you were wanting it set up, what information you would need. Because to Commissioner Gurley's comment about doing for degrees, that is perfectly within, you know, the commission's authority to tell us to do that. We would just have to reach out to every employee and get their, you know, certificates or their diplomas to find out what their education and training is. It's not that we don't want to, it's just that nobody has ever requested that. The experience pay was not something that the county was doing when I came in. So, hopefully, you will think about this and come up with some ideas, and then Lisa and I can calculate whatever it is.
One last comment, Commissioner Rather, and then we're going to move on. This is our starting point tonight. It's back, I wanted everybody on the commission, because you will be voting and making the decision. So, we still have some more meetings to talk about this, massage it, increase it, decrease it. It's up to you of how we want to handle this. Commissioner Rather.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to say thank you for stepping up, manning up, and apologizing. Secondly, I truly believe there's not one commissioner in here that's going to make a comment that everybody else is not going to agree with. I agree with Commissioner Gurley, Commissioner Phillips, Commissioner Gammon. If everybody else stood up, we all agree. I think that we need to do something, well, no, we need to do something. Here's my one comment. 15% gets us kind of in that average, median range. This is not an average or median county. And to be quite honest with you, mostly employees I know, especially on the public safety side, they're not average or median. So, what you've proposed is 15%, which amazingly, y'all proposed at 15%. I really think we need to get 20 above. And I agree there, this is, this is the bottom, and we got to work towards that, and that's going to take a while. And I hope the employees understand that. I think a lot of them do. But I'm just proud that we're, we've taken, we've gone this far, but we got to prove that we're going, we're in it for the long haul, and do the best we can, because we are not the average county.
Well, I totally agree with that, Commissioner Rather. You know, there's, you talk to any realtor, there's no affordable homes left anymore. It's only affordable people from California and Chicago moving here. You know, our people can't afford the homes. Gas has gone up, bacon, my favorite meal, bacon's gone up 18%, so is hamburger. You know, it, gas has gone up, it's everything that's hitting us all at once. So, I think this group, this commission will be focused over the next 45 days as we work towards setting our budget. And so, this is the discussion that we need to start having with each other. Okay? All right, let's move on. Yes, sir?
Five minutes on the benefits, two minutes?
Five minutes on benefits.
Okay. So, in your packet, you should have this benefits review report that we prepared, that in which we compare your benefits package to both the private sector and public sector and some national data. If you look at the back, I guess it's page number eight in the benefits review, it's labeled evaluation. I'll just hit this real quick. Bottom line, your benefits package is a little bit stronger than average, but as Commissioner Gurley said, we're seeing this everywhere we go, where the presumption was that the private sector, you know, that the public sector enjoyed some sort of competitive advantage because of their benefits plans. It's pretty much gone away in the last 10 years or so, mostly because of healthcare costs. And so, it's become, it's become a very expensive benefit to provide, and so employees are being asked to contribute more than they used to be. So, your strengths, I think, are your retirement plan. And I don't need to go into details, but your retirement plan, the legacy, and combined with the 401K, 457 plan approach, is probably, or I would consider to be above, above average. I might even give it a seven instead of a six. Your health plan is pretty strong, maybe your people probably contribute a little bit more in terms of out-of-pocket costs than the average, but it's not by a huge margin. So, overall, I would say your benefits package is slightly better than average. It would not cause me to suggest that you can get by with targeting the salary, wage and salary market at less than market average. I do have some clients that do that, where the benefits package is really strong, and will target the wage and salary market the 40th percentile instead of the 50th. So, anyway, I just wanted to cover that real briefly. Any questions on that?
Got any questions, Mr. Thompson? Seeing none. All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Thompson, for coming again. You came here last week, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Commissioner Cook.
The money will be coming from the taxpayers. What percentage of the county is under, under 20 years old? What percentage of the county is 65 years old and older? Because most of the 65 and older are on pensions, and they don't get the raises that we're talking about here.
I don't know the answer to that. I don't have the answer to that, Commissioner Cook, but we can look at it, I can go next door and ask. Our trustee, Mr. P. Hammy's on the frozen, their property tax rate, that might give us a better idea of percentage. I don't know of any mechanism how we track that, but we'll look into it. Thank you. Next, members, we'll move on into, on our agenda. Next, we have the Health and Education Committee, no report. Item number three, Commissioner McAdoo, Property Management Committee. You're recognized.
Well, I see it on the agenda, but I might have to turn this over to the county attorney, because we do not have a resolution, an easement agreement.
This is dealing with the easement on the property on Weekly for our convenience center. We can call on Mr. Cook, if you would, give us an update on that. This is for discussion only, as you see on your agenda, members.
I'll do my best here, and this is more the wheelhouse of your county engineer. I've had some discussions with him this week. You may recall that a number of months ago, the county commission agreed to dedicate a portion of its property over at Weekly Lane to the town of Smyrna in consideration for a number of items, one of which was to extend a sewer line into the county's remaining portion of that parcel. There has to be development plans and a plat and engineering done for that sewer line. I believe that the county engineer has been in contact with the town of Smyrna. However, those plans, excuse me, those plans are not yet complete. And so, when they become complete, I think that a new final plat will be presented to the Property Management Committee, and then will be brought back to this commission for approval. So, it's probably wise just to defer that until that plan is ready.
Any further discussion on that? That was for information purposes only. Okay, we'll move on. Item number four, Public Safety Committee, no report. Item number five, Public Works and Planning Committee. Commissioner Kusch.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have on your iPad, I believe you have a resolution regarding the Central Tennessee Regional Solid Waste Planning Board, and also, that is for discussion tonight, as well as, I see, legal fees discussion. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you. I see Donna Barrett is in the audience, if you want to suspend the rules or bring her up to discuss, but I'll leave that up to you.
Absolutely. Ms. Barrett, who represents the Central Tennessee Regional Solid Waste Board, she is one of our three representatives on that board, for Rutherford County, the four counties. Without objection, I move to suspend the rules as a second, to allow Ms. Barrett to speak, to bring us up to date on where we are. It has been mentioned here tonight, there is a meeting in McMenville with that board, as stated earlier, I believe, at the 25th, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
In McMenville. So, if you don't mind, please bring us up to date. Ms. Barrett, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and ladies and gentlemen of the commission, thank you so much for letting me speak. But I should say, most importantly, thank you for the appointment about two and a half, a little over two years ago now, to this board. Lisa, I think I mean, thank you. To give those of you that are relatively new, and I say relatively new to the commission, that means in the last 10 years, 10 to 15 years, and to give the audience some background, bear with me as I may be repetitive for information for some of you. Many of you will remember back in 2001, there was news of low-level radioactive waste being deposited in landfill here in Rutherford County. Since that time, during my time in the General Assembly as a legislator, up until now, this issue has led my thoughts, my research, it's had my attention, and it has my resolve to improve our process. So, I'm not somebody that's just come along since the two years you've put me on this. This has been on my radar for over 20 years now. I'm going to give you a little history about how my board came about and where we are with solid waste in general in Tennessee and the directive. In 1969, the Tennessee General Assembly enacted the Tennessee Solid Waste Disposal Act. In that act, they stated the public policy was, among other things, to prevent the creation of nuisances and to enhance the beauty and quality of our environment. 20 years later, they passed the 1989 Tennessee Solid Waste Planning and Recovery Act. In that act, there was an obligation to establish a comprehensive solid waste management plan, and that state plan was to have the, shall have as an obligation, as its priority, the reduction of the volume of waste going to incinerators or landfills by means of local and regional recycling programs. Also in that act, TDOT was obligated to seek alternative ways to use certain recyclable materials that were currently in the waste system. Fast forward two years to 1991, and the state further advanced, in order to further advance the goals stated by, stated by the state, and to enhance their priorities, the 1991 Solid Waste Management Act was implemented. Part of that act created the Regional Solid Waste Boards, one of which I serve on now. Those Regional Solid Waste Boards are to administer the activities of the region. Within that, then the counties were obligated to choose which region they were going to go in. You could do a single-county region, you could do a two-county region, three-county region, four-county region. We ended up with, as of now, we have seven multi-county regional boards. We, as Rutherford County, are part of the Central Tennessee Regional Solid Waste Planning Board. I'm going to call that the board from here going forward, because that's a mouthful. And that encompasses Rutherford, Cannon, Coffey, and Warren. Now, also in the 1991 act, various actions, authority, and obligations of the board were identified. And those were identified in TCA 68-211-814 and following. And it gives authority, as well as obligations, to the solid, to the board. We also have authority and obligation from the Central Tennessee Waste Planning Region Five-Year Update Plan. That, I believe, was first implemented in '01, and has had updates continually. If you will remember, last year, I came before this board indicating that the solid waste plans for the county needed to be approved by this board before it came to my board for approval. You should now start seeing those annually, where you had not been seeing those before, and getting an opportunity to respond and vote on those. Also, in choosing to join a region, every county had to adopt a resolution. All four counties in our central region did the same, did as well. And those establishing resolutions all restated and accepted the board, accepted that the board had such obligations and authorities and actions as was stated in the original enacting legislation. We also have a board handbook, and that further states board responsibility to also include overseeing, directing, and implementing waste reduction and diversion goals. Now, let's talk about one of those obligations that the board region, the regions have. And one of those specifically stated in TCA is to restrict access to any landfills and incinerators, which dispose of municipal solid waste by excluding waste originating with persons or entities outside of the region. Now, given all of the information I've just provided to you, and all the research that I've done in the years that I've been looking at this, specifically the last two years getting up to speed for this board, given those, given the current state of solid waste issues, public sentiment, the stated goals in the RFPs, the goals of the state, region, and local plans, and the board's obligations, I propose Resolution 22-003, which would exclude out-of-region waste disposal in the Central Tennessee region, of which Rutherford County is one of those. Now, what has to happen next is a public hearing. We are constitutionally required, we are statutorily required to hold a public hearing. That will take place on April 25th, it's a week from Monday. It will be in, it starts at 6:00, it will be at the Warren County Administrative Building. The reason for it being in Warren County, I know most of you are familiar with our meetings taking place here in Rutherford County. We are a four-county region, and typically, we've always rotated out just out of courtesy, so that one county gets to host, and their folks don't have to drive every time to another location. So, that date had already been set before this discussion and action took place on April 7th. So, that's why we are where we are. We will have the public hearing, and that starts the ball rolling, that starts the discussion, we start moving forward. That said, I will stand for questions and provide any additional information that I can.
I've got a question. Ms. Barrett, when those rules were put together, what, in '92, that formed all the regions across the state, does it have, I remember something about language that back when George Echols was the first chairman, Dr. George Echols, physician here in town, became the first chairman of that board. I remember something that this board has the ability to have access to our funds to pay for attorney fees, etc., and that would be, all four counties would have to participate? Is that correct?
Let me give some clarification on that. I do have a copy of one of the resolutions. The county, the resolutions that the counties adopted are, they are identical. I think that is required within the region, that the counties joining have identical...
I didn't mean to catch you off guard, but...
That's okay.
If that's true, I don't think that it would be equal with Cannon County, because they just, they don't have the same assets that we do.
I will state the section that addresses, in part, what you're asking, Mayor. It says, "Be it further resolved that this municipal solid waste board shall have all powers and duties as granted it by TCA 68-211-813." And as per... And as part of the participating counties' agreement, as evidenced and constituted by this resolution, it shall have the additional rights and is empowered to utilize existing governmental personnel, services, facilities, and records of the counties which are party to this agreement, and to employ or contract with persons, private consulting firms, and /or governmental, quasi-governmental, and public entities and agencies in the performance of its duties to cause a municipal solid waste regional plan to be produced." It does not specifically say I have access to the purse strings, but it does allow an ability to work with staff. We are a volunteer, we are not a day-to-day working board. We meet, we have, we are required to meet once a year to approve the plans, once your body approves them, and send them on up. We have, in various times during the year, performed other duties. My goal and the goal of those members that are now on the board are to reactivate those obligations and fulfill them to the fullest that we can.
Okay. Commissioner Blair?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Barrett, I want to thank you for your effort. I have been to the last two regional meetings that were, that was held here at the airport in Murfreesboro, and both of those meetings were very enlightening, and I think you were responsible for the revelations that came out of both of those meetings. So again, thank you so much. Also attended the public hearing here that we had several weeks ago, or several months now, and I certainly plan to attend the one in Warren County. I would ask any commissioner that could to attend the public hearing, and I know several of us did, at the one that was held in this chamber, and talk about pulling at your heartstrings and finding out about how this landfill affects our county community. It is just so very enlightening. And to hear from everyone in the region, and specifically for those interested to drive that far and to still share their thoughts, their opinion, or their experience. And getting to attend both of those here at the airport, again, very informative and very grateful for the work that you've done.
Thank you, Commissioner. If I could elaborate just a little bit more on the mayor's question, bringing up funding, as you see, the board's been around for 30 years. And there's been a lot of expenses, a lot of different efforts throughout those 30 years. I am now, my next step after this, or I guess in conjunction with it, will be to conduct a financial review of the board and see where funding has come from in the past for various things. There are, I'm going to conduct that. It's 134 pages of financial documents right now. I'll get those combined as soon as I can and have something in place, not only for this county, but for the three counties that we work with.
Chairman Kush.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Ms. Barrett, for all your hard work. I just want to remind everybody and the audience listening via the Internet or TV that Rutherford County has a contract with Republic. It's not the regional board. It's two separate things. Our contract with Republic specifically states that they can bring in trash from wherever they want to, for as long as they want to. Well, it's, what it says is until the contract expires, which is kind of weird, because it doesn't give an end date on when that contract is. But they can bring in wherever, whatever they want, is the way that contract is written. This resolution is the opposite of that, which is cool. I like it. Trying to put a halt to that. So I just want to remind you that I'm cautious and concerned because we have a contract with Republic. And if we break that contract, bad things could happen. Don't know, but could happen. But I guess, Donna, one of my questions is, and I wish I was a lawyer...
An environmental lawyer.
Yeah, because that would be in high demand right now. But can a board, your board, made up of the four counties, overrule a contract that was made by one county with Middle Point? See where I'm going?
I see where you're going.
Yeah.
And I have an answer.
Oh, great. Well, then I'll sit down and listen.
I am not an attorney. I feel like, as much as I have read, I ought to be. I know it requires a lot more than that, Commissioner Stevens, and I have learned to appreciate your profession more and more as the hours go by every day. Statutory, the short answer is statutorily yes. The TCA, before I get to that, let me state this. I am confident in my research. We have legal counsel that has been obtained for my board, and before I take, somewhere in the process when I take action, I do consult with legal counsel. And I am confident in what I have researched and the action we can take and the effect that it will have. Now, back to why, to answer your question, do we? According to TCA 68-211-814, and I'll read the section that just applies to this specific part. It says, "The regional authority may restrict access to any landfills and incinerators which dispose of municipal solid waste by excluding waste originating with persons or entities outside the region in order to effectuate the plan. If a facility within a region has accepted waste from a specific source outside the region prior to July 1, 1991, the region may not prohibit that facility from continuing to accept waste from that source unless the facility's acceptance of that waste significantly impairs the region's ability to effectuate its plan." And if you've attended any of the meetings, my documentation to the plan is a box about as big as one of these squares. Now, I can go into that with you tonight, if you want, but I have a feeling that's going to come out as the course goes on. And I will remind you, we are already, this board has already enacted one of its obligations and authorities in benefit to Rutherford County, and that was denying the expansion of the landfill. Granted, we're in court with that right now, which is their legal right to appeal, but a whole lot of research has been put into that, and a lot of that record that we've now put together, in addition to other information I have, I think supports what we're looking at right here as well. I'm confident supports what we're looking at right here.
So there's a whole lot of gray area. I mean, this is, this is unprecedented, and the state has never been tested since this was created in '92. I personally have been chastised for not sharing with you. This commission has been chastised for not joining in with the city of Murfreesboro in their lawsuit, but because of the gray area that we don't know. It's a separate entity. If I'm correct, it's a separate entity, even though we have three representatives that represent the county on the regional board, we, as a commission, we don't know if we were to join in a lawsuit, whether or not that that would void our current contract. And we, ladies and gentlemen, we don't have a plan B at this point. Where are we going to take our trash? Or if Republic, if we entered in a lawsuit and they shut us off tomorrow, where do we take it? And at what cost? Is what we have to be aware of. Commissioner Harris?
Commissioners, we've been dealing with this for four years. Very, very difficult subject. But while you're considering supporting this resolution, why you want to give it your support, I'd like you to add one more, one more thing to it, and it's what if? What if? What if supporting this resolution will violate the host agreement? What if giving money to Murfreesboro's attorney fees violates the host agreement? We all talk about it, but we don't know what had happened. So let me tell you what it is. Tuesday night, we had the assistant city manager, Darren Gore, who did an incredible job of showing us numbers. This is coming from Murfreesboro. All right? Everyone of y'all know I'm a numbers guy, but I'm going to take his numbers. So if we violate the host agreement, and Republic says that we will, Murfreesboro says we will not, and our attorney has not even had time to look at it. So let me be very frank. If we do not violate the host agreement, I will support you 100%. I will vote for this resolution. If giving money for attorney fees does not violate the host agreement, I will come to budget personally and ask for it. But if I'm wrong, if we're wrong, and we violate that host agreement, then you need to understand what's the consequences. Take this. Right now, we have 44,000, we generate 44,000 tons of trash, just Rutherford County, not Murfreesboro, a year. Based on Darren Gore's numbers, a tipping fee right now, if we had to go somewhere else, is between 40 and 60 bucks a ton. Let's just take the 40 number. That's 1,760,000 dollars. For us to ship it, based on his numbers, between 32 and 48 dollars a ton, we'll take 32. Now, we're looking at 1,408,000 dollars. Total, 3,168,000 dollars. We cannot do this without a transfer station. Minimum, 17 million dollars, and would have to be approved now. So we're at 20 million dollars right now. Let's just go back to the 3 million. If we had to do that, we have 126,000 households in Rutherford County. That is 25 dollars per month per household. That's what these, I'm not telling any of y'all, whether I am for it or against it, it's irrelevant. I'm just telling you what if this happens. And I stand with Murfreesboro on a lot of things, I really do. But I'm also a realist, and I think that anybody and everybody who's going to make a major decision should look at these numbers. And if you want to do your own homework, do your own homework. But these numbers are real. So I'm not asking you to vote for it, don't vote for it. I'm asking you to ask yourself what if.
This is for discussion tonight. This is not, we're not asking for a vote. This is for discussion to bring everybody up to date on this issue that's facing us right now. I hope everybody understands that.
And if I could add to that, my purpose here tonight is to get you guys up to speed with where I am, where this board is. I have been up to my eyes in this research for months, actually probably since I was put on the board, and it just seems to grow daily. I understand that there may be a cost associated with this. With any action, there's always a cost. Unfortunately, inaction in and of itself is inaction, and the longer, I know we don't know what the next solution is, but we're not ever going to get there unless we are in a position to where that has to be done. I've given a lot of my couple-time over, my husband's given a lot of our couple-time over to trash talk. And I think the best I can say about this is, everybody that's supposed to be doing something needs to be doing something. What I can tell you is my board is doing the something that we think we need to do. I will provide any information you need. I'm not here as an adversary. I'm here trying to be a partner with all of this and fulfilling the obligations of the board that y'all set up, fulfilling the 30-year-old plan that the state put in place that whether it's just time has passed and other parties have gotten in the way, has lagged. And I think for our future, for our history's sake, and for respect to our fathers and forefathers that built this place, we owe it to do our best to implement this state, regional, and local plan as soon as we can. And if we don't know the answer that's a month down the road, we're not going to know it unless we keep, unless we move forward to get there, because it's always going to be a month down the road. And I will work with anybody that wants to fulfill those goals, surely with the number of folks that are interested in this issue, we can find the solution. May not know it today, but you know what? We may know it tomorrow. So let's move.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Question? Ms. P.
You know, I kind of hate to even start down this road, but first of all, I want to thank Ms. Barrett. Sincerely, it is on, or it is not working. But I want to sincerely thank you for your time. And I'm like Commissioner Blair, I've been to several of these meetings, and it's, you know, you're wearing blinders if you're not aware that most of the people in our community are tired of the smell and a lot of the other associated problems with the landfill. I voted twice before your board not allow an expansion, and I still feel that way. But there's a lot of things that if, if this comes to the point where they can no longer bring in trash from outside of our region, the way I read that contract that Chairman Kush was talking about is we would be in violation. What I'd like to see, and the reason I'm standing up here is, there are consequences, as Chairman Craig Harris mentioned, and there's going to be costs associated with it. And I promise you, you know, I know Republic pretty well, and if they can't take trash in from any other counties, they're definitely going to start charging us for putting our trash in the landfill that's located in our county. And there will be costs associated with that. I'm a numbers man, too, and, you know, you're pretty close to what I've been looking at. But sometimes you get what you ask for, okay? And what we're going to end up doing, we're end up, we're going to pay for some of the things that we've been getting for free. And if you've been on our Public Works Committee, you know, and we've all been discussing it, that's a reality that's coming. And it's just a matter of when that time is coming. But having said all this, and wasting your time some, what I'd like to ask is for Chairman Kush and our mayor to reach out to Republic and talk to those guys. You know, this is not, this shouldn't be a one-way street. We should be saying, hey, you know, most of the citizens here feel this way, and I've told them every time I've sat down with them, I said, guys, I like y'all just fine, but generating a smell, you're generating traffic, you've got some problems you've got to fix. If you want my support, you're going to have to fix them. I hadn't seen those problems fixed. And I don't know, putting a gun to their head will fix it, or, you know, what the problem is, but I'd like to ask our chairman of Public Works and our mayor to reach out to Republic and talk to them, maybe bring them to a Public Works meeting. And if it means special meetings or whatever, I think this is important enough, we need to talk to them, instead of just going, hey, we're going to say this contract is no longer valid, you know, I don't know what the timetable on that would be or anything like that. But I want to ensure that we're talking with these people.
Thank you. Commissioner, Chairman Kush.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Right, Donna, I got a, I've got an easy question. The answer may not be so easy, but it's an easy question. For my Public Works group, who's been dealing with this for the last four years, we all kind of realize now why this wasn't done 15 years ago. It's hard. It's hard. All right. So let me ask. You apparently have a team of attorneys or some smart folks that are doing a lot of research for you, it sounds like.
In addition to my... In addition to mine, yes.
Okay. We have Nick, we love Nick. Nick's overworked, and he also didn't go to law school to study environmental law. So he's outrun his coverage on the environmental side. He'd be the first to admit that. Right, Nick? See? So I guess the question is, as of right now, 7:50 PM on Thursday night, do we need to engage with an environmental attorney, we the county, not the regional board, we the county, to help us determine, or can they help us determine the questions, the what ifs Chairman Harris noted, and the concerns P noted, that if we, if we do A, will Republic retaliate with B? Because we don't, truthfully, we don't know what to do. I, I say we. I, as chairman, don't know what to do right now of concerns of big company Republic putting the squeeze on us and saying, you're violating, we're going to stop. Deal's done. We need some legal advice to tell us how much power we have, if any. And I, we can't get that anywhere. So do you think an environmental attorney would, could help us with that? Or would that just be years of research and money spent, and that by the time we got an answer, the ship has sailed?
I think, I think the answer could be yes. I think the answer could be no. Here's what I propose that will help us get the answer to your question, because I don't want to belabor tonight. Y'all weren't prepared for this. I didn't know the questions that would come up. So I'm not saying I'm not prepared. I just don't want to bore everybody to death with a back and forth, especially when I don't have my big box in front of me. So I would suggest, if it pleases the chairman, that let me come to your next meeting or a special meeting. Let's sit down, talk about those. I can explain to you where all I have found that supports the fact that my board can take an action statutorily, and it doesn't, it doesn't cause you as a government or as a body, governing body, to be the ones violating a contract in place. I might throw a real quick thing out, and if, if anybody takes this out of context, remember, we're starting a conversation right now, and everything's going to be elaborated on. But the state of Tennessee, years ago, implemented, let me back up. We used to have smoking in restaurants. County allowed it, city allowed it, planning, whatever worked with those, those places, those things were in place. Nothing changed with those requirements with the city and county, their own internal plans. But when the state came in and said, no smoking in restaurants, that superseded. You didn't see an issue with the restaurants now suing the counties because they could no longer do that. It was an action of another body that affected you, not you affecting your contract. Now, I know that's short and simple, and Commissioner Stevens is going to be calling me and texting me going, you left out so much in that. I'm trying to start the conversation and say that I understand there are what ifs, and we can, we can talk those what ifs through. Am I going to get you 100% comfortable with it? I think any attorney would be able to say, no, I'm not going to give you, I cannot give you 100% guarantee, but I can move you up the needle, and we can get there. But it's, it's going to be a table full of statutes and rulings and all sorts of things. So I propose that, and then after that, at that or after that, I can answer that question more confidently.
Okay. Maybe we'll do that. Last question, we'll move on.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request that Nick Christensen, I have three questions. Number one, does this violate our host agreement? Does, if we give money for attorney fees, violate our host agreement? And my third question is, is it a conflict of interest for us to join Murphysboro in environmental? So is that a conflict of interest? So I'd like you, if you could, get back with Chairman Kusch on that so that we can address this in our May Public Works. Is that plenty of time?
What is that date? Do you know the May Public Works? Yeah. Happy to do that.
It's May 10th.
Happy to do that, Commissioner. And I'd also submit that at the close, if the commission so desires at the close of this meeting, I'm happy to go into an executive session with you guys briefly to at least start that, that initial discussion. Obviously, we can't be deliberating, but I'm happy to go do that since everybody's here, and we can all, at least you can get on my thinking from that if you'd like.
If I could just ask for some clarification, Commissioner Harris. If you're talking specifically about the resolution and the action, the recent action the board has taken, that is not in action one, that's in any sort of legal challenge right now. So there is no joining of the, anything the city is involved in at that point in time. I'm here simply talking about Resolution Three. Again, where there's been no legal action and no co-joining between the city and county on this. And I had another thought, and I forgot it. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Kusch.
As item number four, Nick, I hope you're taking notes. If you and your group across the street happen to know of any environmental attorneys, could you maybe provide a list of those as well?
Yes.
Nick, I'll send you the contacts we used for this.
Thank you. That'd be helpful.
And board members, I do understand there's a lot of questions to be answered, and there's a lot of information to gather. I've been in your shoes, learning and trying to find answers, and new answers, fortunately, new answers come every day. Not as many questions anymore, but new answers, new substance to support this comes every day. So I welcome the questions. I will welcome the opportunity to provide information to help, again, accomplish the plan that the state, the region, and this local body wants, and I think we can do it.
Commissioner Phillips.
Let me just wrap it up. I really don't have a question, just kind of a statement. And I'm going to say, we're all Rutherford Canyons. I don't care where you live, Laverne, Smyrna, Eagleville, or Murphysboro. We're all Rutherford Canyons, and we all pay Rutherford County taxes. What's our end in mind? Our end in mind is to close that landfill. And every entity has that same goal. Murphysboro is going about it a little differently than we're going about it, but we all have that same goal in mind. This regional board is working toward that same goal, and they're working at it from a little bit of a different angle. Is theirs wrong? Is Murphysboro's wrong? Is Rutherford County wrong? Or are we all right? I would submit that we're all right, even though we're working at it at different angles. We all have the same end goal in mind. This step of eliminating Davidson County, Nashville-Davidson County trash, is a step in that direction. There may be consequences for it, but let me just say this. I think practically 100% of our population wants that landfill gone. Am I wrong, Commissioner Percy? And that's what Murphysboro stated goal is. We're willing to spend the money to get that thing closed down. And I think this resolution is one step in that direction. It may be consequences, there may not be. And I'm, I'm in awe of the litigation that we go through, month after month and year after year. This may be another one of those. I think Murphysboro beat us to the step, and they've got litigation underway that pretty much they've initiated, and we're reacting instead of initiating things. So I'm not going to say that Murphysboro is wrong, and I'm certainly not going to say that this board is wrong. But what I am going to say is that we need to come together more than be apart and realize that at some point in time, it's going to cost us money. We don't have a Plan B, but what do we do? And I know that that's a big question, but if there are alternatives for us to just ship it out, that may be Plan B. But let me just reiterate once again, we're all Rutherford Canyons, and we all have that same goal. And I am really appreciative of this board becoming super active over the last couple of years. And Ms. Barrett, thank you for leading that charge. Some of the things that we've discovered, we never knew. And just the fact that we are discovering these things and creating them as an option for us is 100% in the right direction. So once again, what's our goal? Back in the business world, we used to start a new program, and we wouldn't start that program without an end in mind. Then we develop our path as to how to get to that end. We're still in the process of developing that path, but our end in mind is to close that landfill. So thank you.
Thank you, members. Thank you, Ms. Barrett, for coming tonight. We certainly appreciate that. Thank you so much, and we will continue taking the direction, working with Chairman Kusch and our attorney, will move forward and try to keep everyone in the know of what, as we move forward. Steering Committee, no report. Other business, we have Director Michael Gregory from PAWS. Michael, if you would please come forward, needs to address this body. We'll come back into order after being recessed, so you're recognized, Mr. Gregory.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. In 11 years, I've not appeared before the full commission once, so this is a first. I hope you won't indulge me. I've spoken with the mayor several times over the last several months. Sonya and I have spoken multiple times as well, and Lisa and I also. We're in a desperate situation at PAWS. I know that we've talked this evening regarding the salary study and those type things, but we're in a, in a position that I've not seen our department in during that 11 years. When I'm bringing you to you tonight, I know it has not gone through the committee process. The mayor said that it was okay for me to be added to the agenda to ask for your consideration. We're down so many positions that we are not able to fill, mainly our part-time positions and animal control officers as well. But what we're asking to do tonight as a next step is to take those part-time positions that I have vacant, which are three kennel attendants, one vet assistant, and one animal care technician, and ask for your permission to go ahead and move those to full-time positions in an attempt to try to get some different applicants and try to get those positions filled to get us back to where we need to be.
I know, members, this is unprecedented to do this at the end or the middle or any part during the budget process, but as hard as it is to get people to work, and especially in a department like Michael has, what you don't want is people calling you about stray dogs because he's not going to be able to pick them up. They're not going to be able to turn them in. We're down to the point to where it's, it's critical for this department. So I asked him to come tonight because we were at that point. We couldn't wait another month to come back through the budget process or the committee process and then the budget. It's that critical. So I asked him to come tonight to ask for, for assistance. I've got several people, Commissioner Gooch, Kusch, and Gammon.
I'll go so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion? Have a second. Commissioner McAdoo, question, Kusch?
I just have a question. Michael, and if it's, if this is your first time, you're doing very well, by the way. Am I to understand that you want to take the three part-time to three full-time?
Actually, it's a total of five part-time to five full-time.
Okay, okay. All right.
That will take us to where the only part-time positions we have remaining would be two kennel attendants. Our goal is, since we can't match the market and pay for right now, is to try to at least add the benefit portion of that and the extra 11 to 12 hours to see if it changes us getting some applicants. We may be here in two months and be in the same boat, but at least we can say that we tried something different.
And if we can, we need to get IT to go on our website. We need to start asking for volunteers, anything we can. Those animals have to be fed, the kennels need to be washed out every day, they need, they need to be walked, et cetera. I mean, it's, it's critical. Commissioner Gammon over here, recognize first.
Michael, I appreciate what you guys do out there. I'm down out in District One, down around Laverne area. And I really, I really think, I just wanted you to educate us a little bit. When I've had some folks in Laverne, you know, when they called down there, I don't know if this would be employment problems or what, sometimes they have to call the sheriff's department, but it takes a while for them. Is that, is that what some of this employment is needed for? Would that help response time and so forth?
Response time right now would be directly related to the number of officer vacancies, that vacancies that we have. We have 12 officer positions that are budgeted. I've not had 12 officers fill those positions the entire time that we've had them. Due to vacancies and resignations this year, I'm down to five trained officers to try to cover seven days a week.
I'll always be one, especially been on the north end of the county. People bring dogs out there, cats. I wish my wife would quit bringing some of them home, but they're, it's just really bad on that, as you probably know, on that end of the county. And if I can ever do anything to help, I'm, I'm for it, because we need some help down that way, and I'm sure all over the county.
Commissioner Gammon.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for the job y'all do, because I know it's hard, even with everything to deal with. But just a quick question. What do you pay your part-time people?
Our part-time folks were raised this year to 1201 per hour.
They go to McDonald's for 18.
Well, my question is that maybe we need to address this, not now, can't, but maybe we need to start looking at the difference in the part-time, is that you pay a rate. What do your regular officers make an hour?
Well, if we're, if we're looking at the 1201 for the part-timer, that's for the kennel attendants, those are the folks that are doing the cleaning. They match up with what a full-time makes on the pay scale at 1201 per hour as well.
Guys are making 1201 an hour?
And that's why we're having difficulties filling those positions.
We need to fix that.
For an officer, for an entry-level officer position, it's 34,066 at a Step One.
This, this needs to be fixed. I'm sorry. I mean, you know, I'll be honest with you, I wasn't aware of that.
His officers also were bulletproof vest at times.
And going back to the other Commissioner Gammon, talking about those response times and talking about those officers, when you have five fully-trained officers right now to try to cover the entire county, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, that directly affects that response time. But as other Commissioner Gammon understands, in law enforcement, which I guess you could say we're quasi-law enforcement as well, because our folks are out there enforcing animal-related laws, it's not something that someone can come in on day one and go out. And what it used to be in the 70s, you give them a catchpole and a truck, and they go out and they, and they run that position. When an officer comes in, it takes quite a while to get those folks trained. So we have three officers in training now that we're pushing hard, but I still have four vacancies that I've got to fill in order to try to get that response time better and to be able to cover services for the entire county.
Commissioner Rother.
Did I misunderstand? Your part-timer at 1201 an hour, and so your full-time, although they work twice as long, still make 1201 an hour? Is that what I understood?
And that is only for the kennel attendant positions. Now, the other positions that we talked about were the vet assistant position and the animal care technician. Their rates are a little bit higher as a part-time, but they still match the hourly rate of what a full-time does. They're on the pay scale at those, those wages.
All right. So your officers, I heard the number 36, six?
34,066 is the starting Step One pay for an animal control officer. There are no part-time officers.
Okay. I misunderstood. I thought you were saying the 34, zero, whatever, was same as part-time at 1201, because that's, that's.
The 1201 is the Step One for kennel attendants, whether they're full-time or part-time.
All right.
And since January, Michael, how many, how many employees have you left?
Oh, goodness, Mayor. I have it written down here.
Just a wild guess.
17 employees in 2022. Two of those employees were folks that we went through the interview process with, and they went through the onboarding process. they went through the onboarding process and then never showed up on the first day. So a lot, a lot of folks we're seeing are applying for us and using us kind of as a stepping stone, even within the week that it takes to do the onboarding, they find another job, making more money, and they never show up for us.
Commissioner Buchanan.
Thank you. In spite of what you're going through, the day that I came out there, your, your place was immaculate. You, you doing a great job, and I just want you to know that. And hold your head up and keep, keep moving.
Thank you. Cutting services, as the mayor talked about, we've had to do some of that. But the thing that we've had to do that for is to make sure that we have the capacity to care for the animals that are in our shelter. And we can't exceed the number of cleaners that we have to be able to care for those animals there and keep that facility running. So, so thank you for that as far as the cleanliness. We haven't, we haven't let up as far as what we're doing on keeping the animals there fed, watered, cleaned, and taken care of to an appropriate level.
We have been in a good position for the last five years. Basically, it's a no-kill shelter. But we're almost to that point to where that's no longer going to be the case, just because we don't have the help. The community's growing, 28 people a day, and they're moving in from everywhere, buying houses, and they want a new puppy or a new whatever, and to go in their new house, and then they decide they don't want it, and then they come try to turn it in, and we just don't, we, that's why we're here tonight.
Call for the question, please. Call for the question.
Question's been called. It's not debatable. All those, let's call the row. Call the row, Madam Clerk. You're on the board, members.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
20 yes, one no.
Motion passes. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you all.
Yes, sir. Thank you all. Members, last item on the agenda is statements and announcements.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Point of order, that was a vote on the call for the question. We need to vote on the motion now.
All right. Good point, Commissioner. Now we're back on the motion. Let's just, we'll go back and vote on calling of the question. That's proper. All those in favor of calling the question signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Now we're back on, we revote. You're on the board voting in favor of the motion as put.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
21 yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Statements and announcements, it's Kitchell time, I believe.
That's exactly right. This Saturday, which is the 16th, between 6:00 and 10:00, the Kitchell Volunteer Fire Department is having a country hand breakfast. They also serve pancakes for you people that don't like ham. Anyway, we'd be pleased to have you. And if you want to meet anybody that's running for office in Rutherford County, they're probably going to be there.
I've got Commissioner Buchanan, and then, Commissioner, go ahead.
I would like to announce for District 6, the Christiana Fire Department is having a Uncle Bud's Catfish and Chicken, All You Can Eat, starting April the 23rd, from 4:30 to 6:30.
$20.
And we would like to invite everybody to come.
It's a fundraiser, it's $20 for plate, right? $18.99 a plate.
Yeah, $18, $18.95 for adults and $14.95 for children.
All right. I believe Mr. Bart Walker is going to be on early, I believe, from WGNS, Red Cross, May 10th, Student Union Building M T U. Okay. Move to spin the rules to let Sonya address what she's put on your desk. Come on up, Sonya. That's her.
Apologize, I forgot to tell everybody about these. I put these on your desk, gave these out at the budget meeting. One of the things that we've been doing is looking for some out-of-the-box kind of ways to recruit, because we are desperate for employees. Anyways, so desperate probably wasn't a good choice of words, but, so the purpose of this card is, is if you go out to a restaurant, you get good service, and they're friendly and they're courteous. When you pay your ticket, leave this with your bill. If you go somewhere and someone, again, is giving you good service, or it could be somebody at church that's looking for a job, it could be somebody at an organization that you go to. And what this card does is on the QR code on the back, takes them straight to our site and tells what jobs are available, and then they can automatically apply. And one other thing that we're doing is we're having banners made right now for pop-up interviews, on-the-spot interviews. When we get all the information, we'll be sending that out to departments so that we can go out and do, we'll push it through social media and let, through LinkedIn and our Facebook, the county Facebook, to let people know we're going to do onsite interviews that day, so people won't have to wait for the application process. But I gave these out, so if you can give these out to some people, maybe that will help us out in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonya, and thank you for you and your department thinking outside the box of how to bring more people into our community. I mean, every department's struggling right now trying to get good help. I think every department has a vacancy or two. So if you see somebody like she was talking about that, that is pleasant, and, you know, looked like that they, that might be a good employee for Rutherford County, extend that to them. It's barcoded on the back, they can do that. Any other statements and announcements? Statements and announcements? Seeing none, we'll stand adjourned. Happy Easter.